Hello and welcome to the candidate interviews for Umbol ISD School Board of Trustees. This candidate interview event is a project of the Public Affairs Committee for the Partnership Lake Houston. Today's interviews are being produced by DNA Studios. I'm Terry Vaughn, Public Affairs Chair of Partnership Lake Houston, and I'll be your host today. Before we begin, I would like to remind everyone of voting dates, times, and locations. Early voting dates and times are April 24th through April 29th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., April 30th from 12:00 noon to 7:00 p.m., May 1st and 2nd from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Election Day is on Saturday, May 6th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Polling locations can be found at Harrisvotes.com. Joining us now is candidate Robert Scarfo, who's running for position two. Welcome and thank you for joining us for the candidate interview today.
Thanks, Terry. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. So, Robert, tell us, what prompted your decision to run for school board this term?
Well, you know, Terry, a lot to do as it was in 2019, you know, first and foremost, our grandchildren, and then really all the students and future students of our district. Because I'd like to see, and I want to keep pushing and working hard, that they get the same high-quality educational opportunities that our adult kids got, because they're all out there and they're productive citizens, and I think that the foundation that they have gotten at Umbol ISD has really served them well, and I want to see that continue as it has been. So, that's one of my reasons for doing it. And also too, now, I believe my proven track record during my school board service, you know, makes me uniquely qualified to continue to serve. The fiscal oversight I bring to the board due to my deep professional financial experience and business background, as of, for instance, back in 2013, I pushed through an initiative that where we started to refinance bonds. We started a program doing that, and over the years, it has saved millions of dollars to the district that we're able to, instead of pay to bondholders, we're able to put into capital projects. And then also too, the visibility that I bring and that I have on campuses, you know, at district community events, because I seek out feedback from parents, from staff on campuses, from students, and it really helps give me an unfiltered view of how we're doing. And as for instance, I get to see student learning firsthand. I was at the robotics competition about a month back, and there were 27 elementary schools represented, 550 students, the biggest I've seen over the years. And these kiddos have to build robots, they have to program them, and then they're given assignments that they have to program into their robots for their competition to do certain tasks. So, it was really great to see. And a week ago, I got to be a judge at the middle school cooking competition that was put on by our culinary arts director at Summer Creek High School. And this, and we'll talk about it later, but it kind of goes to our career and technology wheels that we have, even at the middle school level. And I'll tell you what, those kiddos cooked some good food. I was stuffed, everything from appetizers to entrees to desserts. And, you know, then I went, I guess it was two weeks ago, I got to visit, I was invited to visit a fifth-grade student council group at Hidden Hollow Elementary, and we sat for 45 minutes and had a free-flow discussion, kind of like this, with these kiddos. I'd ask a couple of questions, and they'd ask back, and we talked about leadership. And they, I'll tell you, so insightful, and I learned the answer to that question, are you as smart as a fifth grader? And I'm not, because these guys, I was very, very proud to be there and see them. So, those are the reasons that I want to continue.
Okay. So, describe for us what you see as the most urgent issue facing Umbol ISD, and as a trustee, how you can affect the outcome?
Well, there's obviously many urgent matters. I think two that come to mind, though, is first, safety, because that's paramount, that's our number-one priority, because if people don't feel safe, if students don't feel safe, it's hard to learn. And then the other one has to do with the teacher issue we're having, teacher shortage. So, start just with safety, and I made some notes on that, because there are so many things, I hate to leave things out, but, you know, number one is the improvements we've made over the years to building hardness, making it more difficult to access, our access control at our campuses, from high school to elementary. And we also, and this is an issue that we haven't got a chance to speak a lot about at some of the forums, but it's very important, and it's important nationally, that we have a very proactive mental health support structure in place for students. We actually have four levels of counseling that goes on. And we are, right now, currently advocating in the legislature that they allow us to start a pilot program where, when the needs of those students get beyond what we can do, we can bring in outside psychologists, therapists, mental health professionals, because we can't afford that right now on our budget, but if the state allows a pilot and tries it with us, we're hoping we can show them this is a good idea. And then threat assessments. We have teams on all campuses. TEA only required one for the district, but we've gone well beyond that. Technology platforms that we use, like the iHelp and the Crisis Go, really helps for staff and students to know what's going on. And iHelp is a technology where people, it's that if you see something, say something. They can do it anonymously, and so we get a lot of good information from that. Then there's the campus access audits that go on. TEA does them, and we also hired an outside firm to do it as well. And then there's obviously multiple daily door checks, door sweeps, as they call them. And we have officers at all the high school and middle school campuses. I would love that we could have them at the elementary. And again, there's some legislation that's winding its way through that may allow us to get, not just us, but districts, to get the funding to be able to go that next level and to hire. But it's very tough competing for officers, as I know you're aware, because you're involved in the community, and we just raised our pay for first and second-level officers last October to try to compete with the other jurisdictions, the cities, the county, the state. And the other urgent issue to me, and this is not news to anybody, but is our teacher retention, attracting teachers, and just the teacher shortage. And we've done a lot of great things, and the administration has put in some great programs. You know, one is called Grow Your Own, where paras who have college degrees can earn their alternative education certification, right? And we'll give them $1,500 towards that. So, that's a great way to nurture and grow more teachers. And then we have another one called the Apprentice Teacher Program. We have 65 in there right now. These are degreed individuals, but fields outside of education. And they also can earn their alternative education program certificate. And then we started, under the legislature's approval of the teacher incentive allotment, back the last session, we piloted a program this year on 15 campuses, they're title or title-eligible campuses, where a teacher can earn, depending on them meeting the goals that are set for them on that particular campus in those classrooms, can earn an additional $3,000 to $20,000. That's great. I think our calendar is an attractive thing for teachers, but other districts around the area, and in the state for that matter, have seen that, and many have started copying, so we're kind of losing that particular competitive advantage. But what worries me too is that the pipeline and attracting young people who are in college to want to pursue a degree in education, so they could come and then, you know, teach K through 12. We're competing with the private sector in terms of salary, health plans, retirement plans, and then a lot of all the paperwork that is put on these teachers. And maybe there's a way that we could take a look at the state level and say, hey, does it really, does that paperwork really help? Is it neutral, or does it actually hinder student performance? And anything in the two latter cases, we should get rid of, and we shouldn't be making teachers do this daily, weekly inputting of data if it's not helping, if we're not getting anything out of it. I think we need more robust stipends to fill hard to attract positions like in bilingual, special ed, and maybe there's some things they could do at the legislative level where there's reduced tuition costs at state universities for people who want to pursue an education degree. Maybe loan forgiveness. If you work for a certain number of years at campuses or in districts, or have campuses that have a high percentage of economically disadvantaged students, that might be a way to attract people in. And then there's trying to remove the barriers to this retire-rehire program, because it's hard, because we have to pay an excessive amount as a district to bring somebody who's retired back into the fold to teach. And maybe they could do something about that. Again, that's at a legislative TEA level. And maybe there's a way to incentivize Texas universities and colleges to attract and turn out more educators for us. So, those are some of the things, like, as I said, we're doing things at a local level to attract and retain, but there's things at the more, I'll call it, the global level that needs to happen, you know, here in Texas and across the country, because that's one of the things that keeps me up at night, is this pipeline. And we have, and this goes back, and I remember Mr. Sitten mentioning that I helped lead the charge going back 10 years, we have pushed teacher pay from dead last, starting pay for teachers, to now we are second against the 15 districts we compete with. So, I'm really proud that we have done that as a board over the years and successive boards. But those are, to me, two of the really pressing issues, like I said, safety and teacher retention.
Okay. What do you feel the district's role is in workforce preparedness?
That's a great question. I was looking through the questions, I said, that's a really good one, too. First and foremost, we have to provide a solid foundation in the core academic competencies, right? Reading, math, sciences, and we need to do that, because everybody has to have that solid foundation. But from there, there's, we need to offer opportunities for students to explore career options, and I'm really happy to see how this has grown over the years. It's something I know I pushed for even before the legislature finally got on the bandwagon about two or three sessions ago. And so, beyond the four-year college pathway, okay, that's great, a lot of kids want to do that, a lot of students, and then you got the STEM programs, you know, the science, technology, education, math, but beyond that, we have our CTE, our Career Technology Education offerings. And I have to tell you, we are well past what TEA says we have to supply or provide, and if you look at the catalog, it's almost like a college catalog of the different disciplines, everything from, you know, health sciences to information technology, from business to agro-science, and so, so many more. And so, what these students get to do is to find out if they, they might be interested in it, they say, oh, I think I might like that field, so that gives them a chance to, even at middle school, to start, like I mentioned about the culinary offering, a competition last week, it gives them a chance to see, well, do I really like that? And they go through a three-course sequence before they can even sit to take an industry certification. So, it gives them that chance, and rather than go off to a two-year or four-year college and say, oh, I want to pursue something in health science, and then after a semester or so, they say, no, this isn't for me. Well, now they've wasted all this money. So, now they get a chance to see firsthand, and if they want to pursue it and they do like it, well, now they can actually go into a two-year, four-year institution, we're into a teaching medical healthcare facility, and have certifications. And that is across the board. So, I think that's really important, that we do that, because as you know, being a businessperson in the community, we need to have educated employees, potential employees to come out. We need innovators who are going to start businesses, and this is a way for them to find out what they do like and don't like. We have over 16,000 middle school and high school students who are in a career and technology pathway, and I think that is just, that is just great. So, I think that's an awesome thing we're doing, and that we have the funding to do that, and we are, I say, really proud to see how far Dr. Fagan has pushed with this, and all the administrators involved, and at the campus levels, all the staff that teach these classes. It's just great. So, I think it's important, and I know as a chamber member through Insperity, it's very important for us to have this workforce coming up.
Excellent. Robert, we're almost out of time, but what business experience and skills, prior board experience, leadership skills, and/or community involvement will be an asset to you as a trustee?
Well, Terry, I think I've mentioned some of it already, and part of it is my 40-plus years of professional financial experience, my business background. It's a real asset to our constituents. I've been at Insperity for 27 years, managing financial risk that we have due to our business model, leading a team of finance professionals. It's just been great, and it's given me more and more experience and deepened my abilities. I've also gained a deep knowledge of the district over the three terms I've served. I've been the finance chair the last two years in this current term, and I've served in leadership roles on, not one, but three successful bond committees and bond elections. I serve on the Lake Houston Y Board for the last seven years. I've served in various board roles for the Village Centers. It's the organization that supports adults and teens with intellectual and developmental disabilities. That's one of my loves, is our special needs group, and that's one of the things I advocate, or one of the areas I advocate for strongly as a board member. And as I mentioned earlier, through Insperity, a member of the Lake Houston Partnership. I have a business degree, undergraduate degree in economics, and an MBA in finance from Columbia, so I bring that. And just to wrap up, honestly and truly, I don't, I believe no other candidate in my race can match the skill set and experience that I bring to this job. And so, I'm going to look and ask all of you who are watching this to please come out and look at the information, go to my website, robertscarfo.com, go to my Facebook page, you know, send me a message, but please, take a look at what I have to offer, and I really and sincerely wish and hope that you will see that I'm the candidate that you want to have there, someone who asks questions, not afraid to ask the questions, regardless of what that may entail later on, or any pushback I might get, you know, someone who's going to be, who's going to rock the boat at times, because sometimes it needs to be. We have to hold the administration accountable, that's our job. And I just want everyone to know that I know my job is, I work for you, the constituents. I don't work for the district. You're the ones who put me there, and I hope you will keep me there, but I promise that I will continue to be that independent voice, that I will do the analysis, and I will come to a conclusion that I think it makes sense. So, if that's the kind of person you want on the board, not someone who's just going to go along to get along, then I'm your person. So, I would appreciate you getting out there and voting. Early voting starts the 24th, Election Day is May 6th, so please, give it consideration, and I would appreciate your vote for me. Thanks so much, Terry. I really appreciate it.
Robert, thank you. Thank you for taking time to join us today.
My pleasure.
Yes, sir. Joining us now is candidate Drew Gutierrez, who's running for position two. Welcome, and thank you for joining us for the candidate interview today. So, Drew, tell us, what prompted your decision to run for school board this term?
Thank you all for having me, first of all. Yeah, so, it's the old three-legged stool. First of all, I started with a conversation with my family. My wife certainly has supported me in very many endeavors throughout the years, conversation with the kiddos, having a small microcosm of the district sitting in my house certainly prompted me to run. So, I have a 10-year-old, fourth grader, seven-year-old, second grader, and my youngest five-year-old, he's a special needs student. I also have a 20-year-old who graduated from Atascocita High School in 2021. And then being involved in a variety of community committees, community events, having come in contact with community leaders certainly helped. So, they talked me, they discussed with me potential run for the school board. So, you know, one of my mentors always said, you either force an election, or you're asked to run for an election. I'm lucky to be in the position where I can do both, and I'm honored. I'm here to serve. I've been a public servant for a very, very long time. I've cut my teeth in the Lake Houston area, so I do feel like I have a good body of work that reflects the overall needs and wants of the community.
Drew, describe what you see as the most urgent issue facing Umbol ISD, and as a trustee, how you can affect the outcome?
So, certainly growth. Having spearheaded the 2022 bond referendum and serving on the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee, the growth is here, and it's happening everywhere, whether you're living in Kingwood, Atascocita, Summerwood, City of Umbol, families are moving here. And the number-one reason why people are relocating to the Umbol ISD district is the school district. We have great schools, we have very, a lot of potential for growth, and so, as a trustee, I mean, you are in the front lines. Your number-one tax bill is the school district. Number-one reason why people move here is the school district. So, for me, it's the three Cs, conviction to students, placing students first in all decision-making, commitment to parents, you are the taxpayer. Let's not forget about businesses, they also pay taxes, and they return, they do deserve a return on investment. And then, consistent to teachers, so continuing to support them, whether it's professional development, extra staff, better pay, better benefits, you know, teachers make the school district great.
Okay. So, what do you feel the district's role is in workforce preparedness?
Well, it's number-one leader, right? We all, the district provides those students that are going to be the future CEOs, the future AC technician, the future mechanic, the future civic engineer, whatever, wherever you may be, and I'm super proud of the work that the district has done. Again, my oldest graduated in '21 from Atascocita High School. She didn't have the opportunity to have those CTE courses in the middle school, but that's a thing now. 41 different tracks that a student can explore, and starting in middle school in the sixth grade all the way through high school. So, that's awesome. I wish I had that opportunity to, when I was going to school, and I didn't have to wait until I got to college to kind of figure out what I want to do. So, exposing, giving those kids an opportunity and exposing them to the various field is a plus.
Well, what business experience and skills, prior board experience, leadership skills, and/or civic and community involvement will be an asset to you as a trustee?
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention I'm a Leadership Lake Houston Class VI alumni. I had an opportunity to talk to Leadership Class XI yesterday. I'm also alumni of Leadership North Houston, and then the Umbol ISD Community Leadership Academy, so they're just to name a few. Currently, I manage a multimillion-dollar budget at my work. I'm an elected official on MUD 152 Board of Directors, where we manage multimillion-dollar projects, multimillion-dollar bonds, multimillion-dollar budgets, as well as, you know, having experience in setting the tax rate. You know, that's one of the primary roles of a trustee, analyzing the tax rate. What is the MNO? What's the debt? Being able to save folks some money as much as possible. You know, fortunately, we're hot, we're a destination district, so people keep wanting to move here, so appraisals aren't helping us. However, it's just part of the growing pains, so to speak. You know, having served on the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee, spearheading the 2022 bond, serving on Partnership Lake Houston's Board of Directors, I'm currently serving on the Umbol ISD Education Foundation, where hopefully by the end of the year, we're going to get close to giving away a million dollars towards teachers and grants. So, big body of work, and I hope that folks see that, and they're ready to elect me as their next Umbol ISD Position Two trustee.
Drew, thank you for taking time to join us today. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joining us now is candidate Erin Green, who's running for position two. Welcome, and thank you for joining us for the candidate interview today.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
So, Erin, tell us, what prompted your decision to run for school board this term?
Well, I've been studying education for probably about 10 years, and the way it's going, I used to be a teacher. I knew something was going on in education, so I started researching it, and I, what I feel like what's happening is our teachers are being devalued, and they're not, they are the ones that know how to teach, and they are having people in Austin make laws to tell them how to run their classroom, and they know how to teach. And so, that was, and plus, what it's doing to the children, that's what prompted me to go ahead and run.
Well, describe what you see as the most urgent issue facing Umbol ISD, and as a trustee, how you can affect the outcome?
I think the most urgent thing is our, we have noticed that this experiment that we've done with computers, it's going, it's not working. Children cannot read, write, and do math, simple math, and I think we need to concentrate on the curriculum. As a person on the board, if there is a curriculum that I feel is not going to justify what needs to be done to help the children learn better, then I can also vote against that. Another way is to offer what I know about curriculum, and perhaps even asking teachers, what do you think we should do? And having some type of dialogue with the board and the teachers as to what they feel is the best thing for their children in the classroom.
Well, what do you feel the district's role is in workforce preparedness?
Okay. C.S. Lewis said, "If education is beaten by training, civilization dies." If we concentrate on trying to train them for getting a job, our focus should be on, can the child read well, write well, do math, know history, and know science? That should be our focus, and it seems like we've lost our focus. If we focus on that, everything else just seems to fall into place, so that's what I would focus on.
Okay. And what business experience and skills, prior board experience, leadership skills, and/or community involvement will be an asset to you as a trustee?
Well, I used to be a teacher. I also have been the heads of certain clubs and things of that nature since I've been, you know, in the working world. I think the most important thing as a leader is you need to be able to encourage people to reach their highest potential, and to encourage people to share their ideas, and that their ideas matter. And I think listening and treating people with respect is the most, the two skills that I think are the most important when you're in a leadership role.
Okay. Well, Erin, thank you so much for taking time to join us today.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for having me.
Joining us now is candidate Marcus Holmes, who's running for position six. Welcome, Marcus, and thank you for joining us for the candidate interview today.
All right. Pleasure to be here. Honored. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So, Marcus, tell us, what prompted your decision to run for school board this term?
Well, being an incumbent, right? I've been on the board for roughly a year and five months. It still goes back to why I did it initially. It's about the students. I've always been, for most of my adult life, involved with children, with students, so I believe in investing in our future. Every single one of almost our 50,000 students, they matter to me, each and every single one. I want them to have the greatest opportunity to go out there and be the best person they can to add value to this world.
Great. Describe what you see as the most urgent issue facing Umbol ISD, and as a trustee, how you can affect the outcome?
Sure. I think the, one of the greatest things, and it's a two-part answer. One, parents are concerned about safety, right? So, what we're doing there as a district, we're already ranked seventh in the state of Texas in terms of safety. However, we are always trying to continue to push that boundary, right? We're trying to bring in more police. I think we have nine open requisitions at this point. We've, you know, we've honored and tried to really push towards more safety. We have the shields that we've now put in some of the classrooms where teachers have opted in for that kind of training, but safety is the number-one initiative. It's tied to our superintendent's evaluation, it's our number-one budget item. So, safety is what we're always going to be, first and foremost, trying to make sure that we continue to bolster and advance. And then the second thing is just the growth of the district, right? We are the sixth-fastest-growing school district in Texas over the last six years. So, how do you manage that, right? With the overcrowded classes, the large student-to-teacher ratios, how do you manage that? Well, we're looking at having to either build, and I want to say again, thank you to the citizens of Umbol and the Umbol ISD community that helped pass that bond in 2022. We're having to figure out how to manage that growth, and so, we have some really great retention initiatives in place. We have 98% retention rate for our teachers. Can we be doing better? Absolutely. Are we trying to always pay them more? Yes. Are we always trying to figure out ways to have, again, retention initiatives? Are we always trying to figure out ways to have, again, retention initiatives? We have one of the best calendars in the state of Texas. That's again, why teachers are coming. And when they get here, they don't leave, right? Outside of those normal attrition rates, we really have some really happy teachers. You know, they want to stay. They want to be able to do things outside of, again, what shows up on your paycheck. They want to be able to sometimes try different things, try something new. And we try to set up and facilitate, facilitate those types of things.
Okay. What do you feel the district's role is in workforce preparedness?
I think we're doing an incredible job. Great question. I get very excited talking about this because about three weeks ago, we had a coding and beyond breakfast where they were showing us some of the greatest, the brightest teachers out there where they're weaving in coding, which we'll dovetail into the, the other, the, the rest of the response, where they're coding in, you know, using coding to bridge the gap on understanding literature or science or history. So we have the CTE flywheel where earlier and earlier in the process of a child matriculating through the education system, they can find out early in terms of exploring whether they want to be a world-class chef, whether they want to be an engineer, whether they want to be a mechanic, whether they want to go into hotel management. We have all these things now that you can look at towards the CTE flywheel. We recognize that not everybody wants a degree. So we're preparing our students to whether they want to have a skill or a degree. This district is putting our stamp on making sure that they know how to do that and can accomplish it. So, you know, if they want a two, a degree, by the time they graduate, they can have a two-years associate's degree. Or they can have their cosmetology license. Or they can be, like at Walgreens, they can be a pharmacy tech. We have students in the district working at Walgreens or CVS. That's phenomenal. And that's what we want to continue to push.
Excellent. Thank you. What business experience and skills, prior board experience, leadership skills, and/or community involvement will be an asset to you as a trustee?
Sure. I think that my, my career trajectory, as well as from a personal standpoint, right? I've been, I've been a youth pastor, been a youth minister. So again, students, children matter to me. I don't mind. I enjoy the investment. It's a return. You pay it forward. In my career, I've managed state, local and education initiatives, whether it was at AT&amp;T or even in my current position with Equinix. I've managed large capital improvement projects with my former company, Crown Castle, managed real estate to the tune of sometimes, you know, two to three to $400 million worth of revenue. So I have the leadership training. I thank God for the investment throughout my career, whether it was at AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or any of these other companies. John Maxwell certified in leadership training and coaching. Franklin Covey, Four Disciplines of Execution, which is a management certification. I've been on the board in my past with Fellowship of Christian Athletes. So again, what it's always driven me toward is leadership. John Maxwell has a wonderful quote, "Everything rides and falls on leadership." So again, I like doing this. I love doing it and it matters to me. And again, it's about the students. So that's what I want to keep it about, students, the teachers and the community. That's what matters.
Marcus, thank you so much for taking time to join us today. I appreciate it. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This has been great. Keephomes.com. Position Six. Early voting starts April 24th and our final vote is on May 6th. Look forward to it. If you're not voting for me, I still ask that you vote. Take care. Thank you.
Joining us now is candidate Audra Dever, who's running for Position Six. Welcome and thank you for joining us for the candidate interview today.
Thank you.
So Audra, tell us, what prompted your decision to run for school board this term?
Well, for me, it's, it's, it's simple. First and foremost, I'm a parent. I've been in the district for 18 years and I have 2017 graduates and then I have a current 2023 graduate. For me, it's, it's been about six to seven years of concentrated high school time, really. But, you know, having said that, I will say that I have seen declines in the district. And in terms of that, I mean, you know, academic rigor in the classroom, you know, they're just not challenging the kids like they used to, like what I saw before. And I've also seen the test scores decline. I mean, there's no doubt about that. But I will say the thing that kind of prompted me to run and I feel passionate about is the curriculum that we saw come across our front door in the fall of 2020. And so when you start, you know, injecting Marxist ideology into the bloodstream of the curriculum, I mean, to me, that's a problem. And so that's what happened to me. I, you know, since then, I've come to think about it a little bit more and I just feel like we need to be focusing on perseverance rather than victimization. And, you know, the victim mentality, that's the last thing we want to do for the mental health of our children and our students. And so there's that. There's also the fact that we all know victims are, they're easily manipulated. And that's the last thing we want for our students who are about to graduate. So we need to be real careful on the curriculum that we're putting inside our children's minds. And so since 2020, I, it put me on a path to start asking questions on, okay, I know you pulled it out, but how did this happen and why on earth are we doing this? And so I, you know, I started talking to my state reps. I started talking to other district board members. I started talking to the State Board of Education people, consultants, all that kind of stuff. And, you know, locally, teachers, counselors, other parents, other students. And so I figured the best way for me to, to find out the real answers to these questions that I was asking was to run for school board. And so that's what prompted me to run.
Okay. Describe what you see as the most urgent issue facing UMBLE ISD and as a trustee, how can you affect the outcome?
Well, for me, I think the most urgent issue from what I've seen is the classroom. Those classrooms need immediate attention. And when I say that, that means these teachers, they need support inside those classrooms. So, you know, the teachers, they're our frontline, right? I mean, there's, that's where all the action happens. And that's where the knowledge transfers from the teacher to the student. That's where the light bulbs come on. That's where those gears start turning in our students. So they need the support. They also need to feel safe inside the classrooms. And I'm not just talking about, you know, the outside intruders into our schools. You know, that's a priority. It's real high up there. But I'm also talking about safety inside the classroom. You know, these teachers, they want a safe work environment. They don't want to be going to their workplace, kind of wondering when things are going to get out of hand. So we need to focus back on classroom discipline for that. But in terms of teachers, we also need to give them the time that they need to teach. We don't need to micromanage our teachers anymore. So, you know, having said that, what I can do as a board member is that as a board member, you're in charge of kind of the direction of the district. And so right now, I think we're just going in the wrong direction. And so what I mean by that is, you know, we have four failing schools in this district. That's unacceptable. Our test scores are down. And what, you know, I'm going to give it, kind of give you three kind of aspects of that. The first aspect is, you know, when you compare UMBLE ISD, the, the average test scores on math and reading to the state averages, we're below. We used to be high. We used to be higher than the average. We're now below average consistently. And so that's one thing. The second thing is, we all know what's been going on with Houston ISD in the news lately. UMBLE ISD, right now, as a district, is scoring six points below Houston ISD. Unacceptable. So we've got to get those test scores up. And the last thing that really kind of brought a light to me is first personally was my college graduates, you know, when they graduate, they get a school profile from their campus, their high school. And on it is a bunch of data. It's, it's just full with data. But it's kind of like your, your school resume. It goes with the student on their college application to their, you know, their college, where they want to go. And so it's, it's crucial that the information on that profile is good. Well, I looked up 2019 for my kid's high school, which is Kingwood High School. In 2019, they had Academic Excellence Distinction Awards, which was English, Science and Social Studies. Today, when my college graduate, when my daughter, if she chooses to go to college, uses that same profile to go to college on, you know, on her resume, there's zero distinctions for Kingwood High School. So they're gone. And so thankfully, Kingwood Park has two. But Klein, Klein High School, which is comparable in Harris County, they have four. And the Woodlands High School has six out of seven. So, so we're just kind of going in the wrong direction. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, silencing parents at board meetings from three minutes down to one minute, I just don't think sets well with the public at all. I just don't understand it. And I've recently figured out through a different forum that that decision for that time limit for those parents is made by the board president. It's, it's not like a vote on the board. It's, it's distinctly the board president. So I'm not sure what's going on there, but that needs to be fixed. So what I've told you, all these data sets and that kind of stuff, it's clear to anyone, kind of really looking at the situation, that we're going in the wrong direction.
Okay. What do you feel the district's role is in workforce preparedness?
It, you know, the district absolutely has a role in workforce preparedness, hands down, like for sure. You know, all students deserve to graduate, being prepared to live life and, you know, be on their own and independent and pursue their American dream. You know, so that's, that's the district's job. I mean, that's that top level. So yes, we absolutely have a role in that. And, you know, the state of Texas agrees with that. The TEA, which is a Texas Education Agency, has a program for that. It's called CCMR. It's College Career Military Readiness. And so in HB, House Bill Three that came out in 2019, you know, there, there's funding for that, right? So, but there's also metrics involved. So if a student, you know, graduates and they go to, they, whether they go to college or they decide to go into a career, like a workforce based on the, the course load that they took in high school, or maybe they were in ROTC and now they're ready for the military. So, so those students kind of go into like what I call a CCMR bucket, right? And so based on those metrics, the state gives the district bonus money for achieving those metrics. So it's, it's a fairly new program. It's, I think it's a win-win. You know, we need to be doing that for our students because not everybody's going to go to college. And that's okay. You know, my, my daughter, she's on the fence right now, but, but she will, I'm, I'm excited she will graduate with everything she needs to take her real estate license test, her certification. So, so that's good. She has options. So we, we do have a role and I'm glad that the district does that. I'm glad that the state provides funds for that. But, you know, as far as the metrics, it is a new program. And last year in 2022, UMBLE ISD had a 38% CCMR level. So we do have room, a lot of room for improvement on that. So I hope we continue in that direction.
Okay. What business experience and skills, prior board experience, leadership skills and/or community involvement will be an asset to you as a trustee?
Well, I mean, what do I bring to the table, kind of is what you're asking. Like, again, I think I might have said it before, but I've been in the district for 18 years now. So I've, I've watched my kids go through the district. It was a great place to raise our family. It started out early on, my community involvement with a youth lacrosse program. And that was the third through eighth grade program, getting those, those kids situated and the team set and all that kind of stuff. So that, those are fun days, right? But it kind of, later on, I, I served on the National Charity League Board for a local chapter here. And the job that I had for the, the NCL, National Charity League people in the audience, it was a big job. It was the vice president of philanthropy. But, you know, they nominated me for that position because they knew I could handle it. And so that was an honor and I'm glad I did it. It prepared me for, for, it did a lot for, you know, as far as going to those board meetings, seeing how the Robert rules work and all that kind of stuff. I learned a lot. So it's, it's a great preparation. But my greatest asset, I consider, is I'm not a politician. I'm a parent and I'm also a business owner. So my husband and I, we've been in business for over 14 years in this community. And, you know, I operate in a world where, you know, positive results equates to survival. And, you know, there are no room for excuses. And so with business ownership, the buck stops with you. And so if, if there's, if there are failures or if there are problems, you know, you take responsibility for that and you pivot. And so that doesn't bother me at all. That's just part of kind of in the world I operate in. But also, you know, when you, when you look around, I encourage voters to look around and talk to, you know, talk to their neighbors, talk to people they used to know, I don't know, 10 years ago and call them up and talk to them and ask them about the school system. You know, talk to those, those high school graduates that are about to, to leave. If you have an honest conversation with those graduates, they'll tell you exactly what they think. And I, you know, I've done a lot of that too. So, you know, we have the potential in the district. We have a lot of potential, but we just need to make the right choices. And to me, that needs, that means we need to focus on education in those classrooms without distractions, that first and foremost. And we need, as a board, we need to know the boundaries, right? We need to follow the state laws. There's a lot of laws coming out of the Texas legislation right now, a lot. And it, a lot of it has to do with education, K through 12. And so we need to be, you know, following that. We need to know what's, what's going to work and what's not going to work. And finally, we need to practice fiscal responsibility, just as a habit. And, you know, that will prepare us for what's coming in school choice. We don't know what's coming. So we need to get our, you know, our house in order fiscally. So, but, you know, so if, if the voters choose to vote for me, they will see positive changes in those three areas.
Audra, thank you so much for taking time to join us today. Really appreciate it. Joining us now is candidate Holly Hamm, who is running for Position Six. Welcome and thank you for joining us for the candidate interview today.
Thank you for having me.
So Holly, tell us, what prompted your decision to run for school board this term?
So again, thank you to Partnership Lake Houston for having me at this candidate forum. My name is Holly Hamm and I'm running for UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees, Position Six. When my family and I decided to move to this school district, we looked at the community. We looked at the schools and we looked at all the data that was available. We actually came and visited this area. We visited with the district administration. We visited with the principals and the counselors. We had choices and we selected this school district and moved here in the summer of 2021. This is a good school district. And in order to keep and make it great, keep it good and make it great, we need to stay focused on student success and preparation for the real world after high school graduation. And we also need a school board with the same focus and the same commitment. The school board is lacking in transparency and accountability to families and there is unhealthy conflict on the board. So I'm running to bring almost 30 years of experience in business, technology and public service leadership to help address our most complex challenges. This includes teacher retention. This includes curriculum rigor and preparing our students for post-graduation.
Great. So describe what you see as the most urgent issue facing UMBLE ISD and as a trustee, how you can affect the outcome.
I think it's a combination of the who and what that will result in education success. So one of the most urgent issues facing UMBLE ISD is teacher retention. So there are two ends of the spectrum, right, that are causing this urgent issue. Teachers are leaving the profession and it's not just retirement. There's high demands on teachers inside and outside of the classroom. And this is causing a lot of burnout and some are actually seeking other passions. And this industry doesn't have a pipeline, a strong enough pipeline of teaching professionals that are going to meet the demands of our growing population. So who's going to teach our students? So to assist teachers and allow them to focus on the teaching part of their, their job, I would propose a halftime resource. And this resource will be an assistant in the classroom. And where does this funding come from? Well, if funding, if, if funding for this much-needed resource is not going to come from the district, perhaps families that can be very involved can support. So my children went to elementary school in the District of Washington DC, where each class had, excuse me, in, in the District of Columbia and where each class had a full-time assistant. And so funds for the assistants were actually raised by the families. There are multiple fundraisers throughout the school year. And so that, that was a much-needed resource for the classroom. I think the other aspect of education success is curriculum. Curriculum degradation will not prepare our students for post-secondary education and to be competitive in our world. We can't just test, we can't just teach to the test. We can't just test, we can't just teach to the test, as I've heard a lot of teachers and a lot of parents tell me. Math, reading, and science, we need to remain rigorous with a classical curriculum. We need to have these two students learn what they're, learn what they're taking to the next level and what they're reading, so that they can actually advance from the one level to the next. And there are ways to introduce social topics and political issues. And that accountability is with the parents and not the schools. The children must learn that from the parents. I think our high schools are also graduating students without basic financial education. I would propose a critical thinking, problem-solving, a basic financial literacy course. I would, and there's a course, there's a course that's actually been implemented across Texas. Thousands of students in Texas have learned. It's called Real Life Financial Math. They learn how to balance a checkbook. They learn the difference between spending and saving. They learn about contributions and charitable contributions. And they learn the long-term consequences of each of these actions. And this will help them prepare financially for their future so that no matter their path after high school, they have that basic financial education.
What do you feel the district's role is in workforce preparedness?
So our students are our future. Our kids are our future, no doubt about it. They're our future workforce. Engineers, teachers, attorneys, public servants, homemakers. So the district has a very, very important role to prepare this workforce to be knowledgeable and to be competitive. And I believe that the business of a school district is to prepare and educate our students to be productive citizens. So after a formal K through twelve education, you know, our children can, these young adults, they can enter the military and serve our country. They can be employed. They can further their education through specialized fields of study. And to be a part of the workforce means they're educated, they're trained, and employed. Well, the introduction of the C T E will in the middle schools, I believe that that is a great way to expose young adults and young, our, our young students to various fields that are in society today. But that's not all, right? Some students actually know what they want to be when they grow up. But the early exposure by the district and by the families and the community, they may spark that interest and lead them into specific fields of study that would prepare them for the workforce. Well, if you look at the entire district, there's public schools, there's private schools, and there's homeschool students. And so we all have a role within the district. We have to work together to make the community strong. We collaborate across the neighborhoods, across all the different types of schools. And I think as a taxpayer, we all agree that we want the district to have strong and safe environments in schools and that we educate our students so that they can be a strong, productive citizens of the workforce.
Yes, ma'am. What business experience and skills, prior board experience, leadership skills, and/or community involvement will be an asset to you as a trustee?
Well, since graduating from the University of Houston in nineteen ninety-four and embarking on a twenty-nine-year career in technology, business, and public, and, and public service, I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot from the countries that I've worked in. I've learned from many cultures and organizations and worked with all, all people from walks of, with people from all walks of life. So at each job and position that I've take, I've taken, I've had increased authority and accountability. So I'm a business executive. I understand the complexities of organizations and how to manage different groups in different settings. I've worked in highly conflicted teams, but we're able to still produce positive results. From two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve, I served as chairman of Skills for Living. It's a five oh one C three nonprofit organization, and our mission was to break the cycle of poverty. And we help families and we educate them and mentor them by setting goals and how to actually implement them, even if it was to find a job, to update a resume. Well, an affiliate of Skills for Living is Financial Mentors of America. And that mission is to actually provide the financial education to the family and also to their, their children. Well, today, that program is called financial, excuse me, Real Life Financial Math. I had mentioned that earlier. And, and Real Life Financial Math has taught more than fifty thousand students across the great state of Texas. And it's a one-year, critical-thinking, problem-solving, financial planning curriculum. So our students and our young adults, they need this in financial education. And finally, I've had the great honor and privilege to serve Americans at the highest level of government as a presidential appointee from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one. I served in the agencies of education, commerce, housing, and also the Office of Civil Rights. And I believe that with decades of experience and know-how, I'll be a valuable asset that I'll be able to bring to the school board.
Thank you. Well, Holly, thank you so much for taking time to join us today.
Well, thank you. Please visit my website, hollyforumbleisd.com, learn about me, my passion, my experience, and my credentials to help really steer UMBLE ISD from good to great. My family and I made the decision to move here. We've been very happy in the district. I want to be a strong voice for students, for parents, for teachers, for staff. And I believe how we address the challenges of today, that is going to be the education system, and that will set the direction for our future, for the next four years and for the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Joining us now is candidate Michael Grabowski, who's running for position seven. Welcome, and thank you for joining us for the candidate interview today.
Thank you.
So Michael, tell us, what prompted your decision to run for school board this term?
Well, it's twofold. My wife is a second-grade teacher in UMBLE ISD, and I have to brag on her for a minute. She's the Bear Branch Elementary Teacher of the Year, so it's pretty impressive, I think, because it's a, and it's awarded by your peers. I don't know if there's a better award than one of those. And we have a daughter who we entered into UMBLE ISD as a kindergartner nine years ago, is in eighth grade now, about to graduate. We've noticed, noticed a steady decline in numerous areas of the district. So it's not only the personal investment of a wife and a daughter, it's the investment of the community and the school system slide in general. For example, excuse me, there are three areas where I feel we have really declined. One is in test scores, which I will get into later. Second is in the proliferation of the sexual indoctrination into our school libraries. And I'm a firm believer that if it's in the libraries today, it will be in the classroom tomorrow. And that is a subject not part of teaks, not part of teaching, that should be left between parent and child in the home environment. It is neither subject nor setting appropriate to have in our schools. And thirdly, I would like to see a much safer school, safer from bullying. For example, Mr. Kohler at a task of, seat of middle school has a program, which I'll get into later also, to stop bullying and limit the use of cell phones, as well as to enact a guardian or marshal program for an armed presence in all our schools. As the world gets less safe, we have an armed presence in our high schools, in our middle schools, but not in our elementary schools. I want to see that program expand, expanded.
Well, describe for us what you see as the most urgent issue facing UMBLE ISD, and as a trustee, how you can affect the outcome.
A school system is primarily tasked with educating your child. The Texas Education Administration grades us based on STAR and E O C outcomes. Over the last ten years, let me go back, ten years ago, in English, UMBLE ISD was nine points above the state of Texas average. After the twenty-two STAR test, we had fallen to only one point above the Texas state average. Math is even more concerning. Ten years ago, we were nine points above the Texas state average, and unbelievably, UMBLE ISD has slipped to four points below the Texas state average. This is just not my data from doing my research. This is corroborated by a, a company called Public School Review that takes every ISD in Texas, in fact, every ISD throughout the country, and analyzes their data. We did a ten-year look back with all students, meets or exceeds grade level, and came up with the same, excuse me, same results as Public School Review. The drastic decline of test scores needs to be reversed. The teachers beg for more time. They ask for more resources in the classroom and to streamline the behavior discipline child, or the discipline destructive child of that classroom where they get their hair pulled, their name called as a slur, or other distractions with tables being thrown or other issues. We need to concentrate on educating our children again to reverse our test scores. The primary purpose why we have a school system is to teach reading and math. It's the very basics which everything else is developed upon. Thank you.
Okay. What do you feel the district's role is in workforce preparedness?
It is critical. Where I went to a military school, every day when I would march to lunch or I would walk to class or just walk on an afternoon off on the weekends, I'd walk past a statue at the Air Force Academy. It was called the Eagle and Fledglings. Google it. It's kind of cool. The inscription is, man's flight through life is sustained by the power of his knowledge. That is exactly what this school system should do. They should take these young boys and girls, excuse me, it's allergies, young boys and girls that enter as a kindergartner, as our daughter did, now in eighth grade, and when they become a young man and woman, young man or woman, at the age of seventeen or eighteen to go off to college, that they are ready to take on the college world. Their life will be sustained by the power of knowledge gained in this school system. It is crucial. It is the number one thing that a school system does. Then you add in home life, and you add in a church home, and you have the whole life. But a very vital pillar of those three is the school environment. Thank you.
Michael, what business experience and skills, prior board experience, leadership skills, and/or community involvement will be an asset to you as a trustee?
Okay, I've, I've already alluded to it. After high school, I attended the United States Air Force Academy and graduated a degree in mechanical engineering. After graduation, I went on to fly the F fifteen on active duty for nearly nine years. After nine years, I went to commercial aviation. I'm with United Airlines a little over thirty years. I'm currently an Airbus captain here in Houston for United. I also am an active law enforcement participant, and that is in an armed capacity. I also earned an MBA from Webster University and taught, taught at University of Nevada of Las Vegas for nearly nine years. So I have a bunch of teaching experience as well. I was also on the Nevada Tennis Association Board of Directors, working with the Andre Agassi Foundation to raise money within the state of Nevada to grow this board of tennis, but to also support the U.S. Open tennis variety that is held in New York each late August and early September. So I'm used to raising money for various organizations, sitting on the board for eight years. I also bring law enforcement experience, like I just said. That, this board is missing a law enforcement perspective. Nobody on the board has any. I bring that unique perspective. And lastly, being a veteran, and one of the three pillars that we measure our success by, college, career, and military-ready, there is no veteran, nor retired, nor any military presence on that board. I would love to bring that experience as well, as a, as a unique person to that board. Thank you.
Michael, thank you so much for taking time to join us today. We appreciate it.
I appreciate your hospitality. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Joining us now is candidate Nancy Morrison, who's running for position seven. Welcome, and thank you for joining us for the candidate interview today.
Well, thank you. I, I very much appreciate being, being here.
Yes, ma'am. So Nancy, tell us, what prompted your decision to run for school board this term?
Well, I, you know, I've put in eight years, and I want to put in four more. I want to see the projects that we've started in the twenty eighteen, the twenty eighteen is just about finished, bond, the twenty-two bond is coming, and the growth in the area and how these new buildings and facilities will, will come into play. And also, as you know, I have a love for, for schoolchildren. I mean, students are my life. And so I want to continue. And I also would like to see some of the newer things coming into play, such as the wellness school, if we can get it, get it through and get it through to the state for the, the things that we've seen that's come out of COVID, and the things that our teachers are working with now that they've never worked with before. So I, I thought to myself, okay, Nancy Morrison, you're not finished. Let's do this.
Excellent. So describe what you see as the most urgent issue facing UMBLE ISD, and as a trustee, how you can affect the outcome.
Well, I think, uh, state funding is probably going to be the pressing thing. Now, that, along with that pressing thing is retaining our teachers, keep, keeping them here, because needless to say, we have one of the best staffs in the, in the state of Texas, okay? Actually, in the nation. Okay? So making sure that they have the supports that they need, okay? And then along with that, shoring up our buildings, making sure they're safe. And with those things, those things cost money, okay? So we've got to be able to advocate with the state, and I think I can advocate at the state level. I know what is going on. I know how to talk to those people. And so that's how I can help.
Okay. What do you feel the district's role is in workforce preparedness?
I think it's crucial. I think the district prepares the future workforce, as you see it, okay? Now, in two thousand and seventeen, we pulled together a group. We asked the superintendent, what is it that our graduates need to go out there and be in the workforce? I mean, what, what do they need? So they set up, we pulled together a committee of eighty people. Inside that eighty people were our business people, our chamber people, our parents, our students, our staff. And with that came up with the six crucial things that these students would need to work in the workforce. That being a global citizen, a communicator, a critical thinker, a collaborator, an innovator. And those are the things that we need to make sure. So working with our college and career and military preparedness, we can pair the, we can prepare these students to be ready to go into a career or go straight into college. But at least we have prepared them with a variety of, of, of sources that they can go to and do.
Yes, ma'am. What business experience and skills, prior board experience, leadership skills, and/or community involvement will be an asset to you as a trustee?
Well, I think my, my forty years of educational background, being a teacher, being an administrator, being able to understand how, when decisions are made, how it's going to affect that, that force out there, how it's going to affect those students, how it's going to affect those teachers. Now, granted, as a, a college person, many, many years ago, I worked as an assistant bookkeeper. So needless to say, math is my interest. And, but I said I have put in forty years of knowing what it's like as a building principal and running a building. Now, grant you, it's a whole different, it's a whole different aspect on the other side, now that I've, uh, working with the, a district of fifty, almost fifty thousand students. I mean, we're at forty-nine now. And so, I mean, it's different, but the bottom line is, the experience is there. Plus, I sit on three boards now, presently. So I think that, that experience holds tight.
Well, Nancy, thank you so much for taking time to join us today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Joining us now is candidate Natalie Carter, who is running for position seven. Welcome, and thank you for joining us for the candidate, candidate interview today.
Thank you for having me.
So Natalie, tell us, what prompted your decision to run for school board this term?
Well, Terry, just to be quite honest with you, right now, it's a pivotal time in our district. Um, now more than ever, it seems like we're divided. We're not necessarily united. And we're distracted by a lot of things. And so that prompted me to run. Additionally, of course, the children. I wanted to serve my children and, and their friends and my community in a greater capacity. So those are the reasons why I decided to run. Right now, UMBLE ISD needs leadership. We need people that are willing to step in and unite, bring us together as a community, as well as talk. I have that ability to do that. I have that ability to go from corner to corner of the district, engaging with families, engaging with community members who see differently than I do. And that's why I'm running, because I'm that candidate that can unite our district.
Great. Describe what you see as the most urgent issue facing UMBLE ISD, and as a trustee, how you can affect the outcome.
Right. So it's no secret that we're growing at a rapid pace. In fact, in two thousand and twenty-five, we're projected to have over fifty-two thousand students. So immediate, straight away, is teacher recruitment, educational staff recruitment as well, and also retaining those staff. It's critical, because with the growing population, we're going to need more educational support, support staff as well as teachers. So we have to provide them compensation plans as well, as well as the most support in and outside of the classroom that's critical. Next is, of course, school safety. We have to, have to reinforce what we're doing now. And before I go into more detail, I wanted to stop and say thank you to all of our police officers, as well as our teachers and staff who are committed to currently keeping our students safe. I appreciate you. I see you, and I'm here to support you. Again, we really need to help reinforce the exterior of our schools, as well as focus on the internal aspects of, of safety as a whole. What I mean by that is this, let's focus on mental health, behavioral health of our students and our staff to disrupt that pathway of violence that has literally led to some unfortunate events around the country. So that's critical. Another thing is this, we got to get our stakeholders involved, the community members. We have to say, hey, let's get together and unite on the security front as well as just uniting again, just to kind uniting again, just to kind of just get back on course to make UMBLE ISD exceptional.
Great. What do you feel the district's role is in workforce preparedness?
Ah, it's critical. It's no secret that a great school will lead to a great community and great civics. So, right now, I think we're on the right track with our personalized learning approach, because success looks different for everybody. So, success for one student may not necessarily mean going to college. And so we need to capture that early, kind of go in early with those students to say, hey, what's your goal? Starting around sixth grade, what do you think you might want to do when you grow up? You understand what I'm saying? And so, and build upon that, I would, I think that's critical, that we just continue to just foster and encourage our students to choose their path that's successful to them, and not necessarily imprint what we think is success for them, but allowing them to lead their way.
Well, Natalie, what business experience and skills, prior board experience, leadership skills, and/or community involvement will be an asset to you as a trustee?
Well, I am a mom of three amazing students in the district. I'm auntie to a few students in this district, as well as former graduates of the district as well. I have friends throughout the entire district, at various schools. I'm a nurse practitioner, so I have that definite science and evidence-based practice approach to my everyday life as well as our community. I've served in multiple, multiple capacities in the district over the past eight years, anywhere from a room parent to a PTO president. I also completed the Community Leadership Academy, which allowed me to visit our campuses all over the district and meet amazing professionals, our teachers, our staff, all of our support professionals. I've been able to just at least meet you at one occasion or, or a time or two. So that is what I think I can bring to the table. That leadership, my ability to be personable, as well as just my ability to lead and inspire, I think would be a great asset to our already amazing district. But my, my goal is to not only make our district amazing, but exceptional. I'm a competitive person. I like being number one. And so that is my goal for becoming a board trustee, is engaging the community, reinforcing, reinforcing the importance of our teachers and supporting our educational staff, as well as fortifying our schools and making them safe.
Well, Natalie, thank you so much for taking time to join us today.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me, and I greatly appreciate it. If you would like, could you please visit my website if you want more information about me at www.carterforumbelisd.com? You could follow me on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter. I'd love to engage with you, and I look forward to serving you.
Thank you. Joining us now is candidate Lee Marcus, who's running for position seven. Welcome, and thank you for joining us for the candidate interview today. So Lee, tell us what promoted your, what prompted your decision to run for school board this term?
So I have lived in Kingwood since 1983, and I decided to run after learning that our ratings have dropped and, you know, mental health has become a huge issue, and, and we have safety as an issue. And, um, I don't know, I, I feel like there are some changes that we need to work on in my real estate career. The first thing people say to me when they meet me is, um, you know, tell me where all the good schools are. And so I just think we need to brush up a little bit, and here I am.
Okay. Well, describe what you see as the most urgent issue facing UMBLE ISD, and as a trustee, how you can affect the outcome.
Well, there's a, a few things. The number one thing on my mind right now is mental health. We have a lot of problems stemming back from the hurricane Harvey. And we had a lot of children that were displaced, kids that, um, you know, they lost homes, they had parents that couldn't afford to rebuild homes and didn't have insurance. And so subsequently, because they had to pay for interim housing, they, they didn't have money to get back to their homes. So kids that lost homes, they were displaced, and we barely got over that, and then they were faced with, uh, COVID. And, um, the sports, they weren't playing sports, they were at home, and, and especially uh, primary school kids, you know, they look at faces to figure out if they're looking at friend or foe. They need to see teeth or a frown, and people were behind masks, and there's just a lot of, uh, problems going on right now with mental health. That was a huge shock to me. Also, like I discussed, uh, school scores are, are a huge issue, and I don't want to see us end up like Houston ISD. So I think we, there's some things we could do to work on that a little bit. Also, information in the library that, that is accessible to our students, and certainly safety is a huge issue. So, um, the mental health thing, going back to that, you ask what I think we can do. These are only some ideas, but, um, I think regarding mental health, it might be a, a good idea to put a few more counselors or maybe psychologists on the campuses to help these kids that are suffering. Um, and, and it's, it's actually even in grade schools, nine-year-olds that have, have spoken about suicide. At nine, I didn't even know what suicide was. So, I mean, that, that's really a scary thing. Also, the school scores, we have a lot of pockets where we have financially challenged families, and after visiting with, uh, like 22 principals out of 45 campuses, I have some ideas for that. I know my time is limited here, so I'll just keep moving on. Uh, library information, I think that should be up to the parents. Those books need to be vetted by parents, and, and they can make decisions on what material is accessible, uh, for their kids. And, uh, safety, I don't, I don't know that arming the teachers is the answer, but certainly to put more UMBLE constables or policemen on the campuses, so there's not like an 11-minute lapse for them to get there. I don't know that, I've had mixed emotions about it. So I, I, I'm still kind of toying with this. I, I think that it might be a, a smart thing to have one or two teachers on the, in the buildings armed, if they're comfortable and if they've been trained. But for teachers just to randomly carry, uh, arms into the school and they've not been trained, I, I don't think it's a good idea.
Well, what do you feel the district's role is in workforce preparedness?
Well, I think, um, we all need to push toward higher education. These kids, all kids are our future. Not every student is college-bound, and, and because of that, I think that they should continue to promote vocational skills, like plumbers and beauticians, and however they can graduate and be able to make a living and be responsible adults.
Okay. And then what business experience and skills, prior board experience, leadership skills, and/or community involvement will be an asset to you as a trustee?
So, um, I, like I said, I've been in real estate for a really long time. And years ago, I had the amazing opportunity to have dinner with Dr. Ben Carson and his adorable wife Candy. And Dr. Ben Carson told me, you know, not everything in life, I was, I was a business major and a finance, minored in finance, not every, every problem that we face is a mathematical problem. And he once told me to start reading hearts. And, um, so I did, and my business and my whole life changed, certainly with the people that I was working with. I just think that there's just a lot that can be done. My experience has been, I'm right now continuing with a team of physicians at MD Anderson to build, uh, two schools in the still, uh, war-ridden South Sudan. And we've been successful in acquiring that land and building these two schools, and, and so I've had a little experience there. Served on the board at the Clubs of Kingwood, served on the board at the Junior League of Houston, and I've just tried so hard to be as community-involved as I can. Once again, reading those hearts and trying to figure out where, what's best for the kids and the parents and, and the administrators as well.
Yes, ma'am. Well, Lee, thank you so much for taking time to join us today.
It was a pleasure being here, and thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you.